Pretty burdensome to have to go through two hearings to get that approved. It's not something completely outside of the code. It's actually allowed in the code under conditions. So usually in those situations, we want to try to get to the point where people are coming in and they've just shown that they are meeting the conditions and those are the only things you can decide. This, I think, is a vestige of an old situation. Originally, all special exceptions were heard by the Board of Adjustment. In 2014, they did away with the Board of Adjustment, replaced with the Special Magistrate. We've talked about that a little bit, about how that's become normal because they're supposed to be just applying law in a quasi judicial setting. And when you have an appointed board, they're more likely to be sympathetic. It's harder for them to stay objective and just also to administer strictly the law because, as you know, it's difficult at times when you have to weigh out. You've got public hearing, people coming in, making comment, but there's only a portion of that you can consider in your decision making. So most communities have gone to special magistrates for that reason. But when they did that, they did it in kind of a series of ordinances. There were three or four different ordinance changes that got us to the point we're at now. And I think that it looks like the hearing of the planning board was put in at some point when they took the Board of Adjustment out to make sure our community was still involved. But then the magistrate's full powers don't require that kind of input or recommendation. It's not really an advisory position to have a second quasi judicial hearing. So what we're proposing is that the special exceptions go directly to the special magistrate, that they don't require local planning agency recommendation the way you would for an original zoning request. There are also some grammatical areas you're going to see in each of these if you had a chance to look at your pocket. Sometimes it's correcting grammar, sometimes it's correcting gender assumptions. Also, on the very end of this, because we're taking out the two-step hearing process, there was nothing in this section that addressed the manner in which there could be an appeal lodged. So we added a section in that deals with the appeals. So if someone does object to the special magistrate's decision, they can use the other, the procedures that are used for variances and other actions of the special magistrate to appeal to a local court.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Do any of the Planning Commission members have any questions?
I have a question. What kind of things, because I'm fairly new to this, would be something that would now come prior to the Planning Commission and now just go to the special magistrate? What type of things?
See, I should have my zoning code with me. For instance, in some districts, you may have, like a cabana or a bathhouse is allowed in a residential lot as long as you meet certain setbacks and conditions. But it still has to go to a hearing because it's a special exception. It's not an everyday assumed use for that. And so if somebody wants a cabana or a bathhouse under the current situation, they'd have to come here and then they'd also have to go to a special magistrate. And even though it is allowed under the conditions that are set. And for special exceptions, the conditions either have to show that there's no detriment or harm to the community, that they've considered all, its impact on the surrounding area is not going to be dangerous in any way. It meets all the setbacks and conditions. It can't have, the property itself cannot have any other kind of outstanding ordinance or violations that might, you know, you don't grant them a special exception if they haven't even met the conditions of the current zoning for their existing use. But there are a bunch of uses like that in each category that says, you know, these are the standard zoning and then also these are the special exceptions. In some places, for instance, we only allow churches by special exception. Actually, we only allow churches by special exception in the entire city, which is a problem we're going to have to fix. But that's an example.
Well, I guess, what's the big deal if they come to local people besides, usually the magistrate isn't someone from the...
Correct. The magistrate would not be somebody from the local community because what they're doing is applying just those standards as to whether it meets the criteria. The problem is that it's a big cost. It's a cost, it's a big time delay.
Yes.
Each time we have a hearing, the amount of staff time and the review and they have to pay for the extra hearing. For instance, I think the special magistrate cost is going up to, I think it's, in some cases thirteen, in some cases seventeen hundred dollars for a hearing because that's how much it costs for us to get through the process. If on top of that, they also had to come to the plan board, then in order to get your special exception, you're talking about well over two thousand dollars worth, twenty-five hundred dollars just in fees just to go through the process. Quite often, they bring in an attorney to represent them because it's a quasi judicial hearing, so there's additional cost associated with that, too.
Well, is there a way that we could reduce the cost locally for them? Because a special magistrate's going to cost that no matter what, right?
Right. And some places have decided you would do the special exception at the plan board and get rid of the magistrate so that you only had one hearing. The issue here with that is that the charter says it has to be done by the Board of Adjustment and/or in this case, the special magistrate, because that's who's been appointed in that position. So special exceptions have to, by charter, go to that, through that process. Yeah, it would have reduced the cost some for the plan board, obviously, because we don't pay y'all per hour as we do with the special magistrate. But there was no any way to take it out of that end because of the charter requirement. They would have to amend the charter.
I guess my question is, to have a magistrate that's not personally involved in the community, it's kind of scary to me to turn that totally over to them. If there was a way we could reduce the cost to the homeowner locally, potentially, you know, and still take, basically, you're just taking a step out and taking the local step out, the way I read it and understand it.
Right. They do have to use the criteria. Even you can only use the criteria that is established for the special exception. It is a way I saw as not only reducing the cost, but the other issue is, when you have two quasi judicial decisions, potentially what you have is two decisions that come in conflict with each other, which sets us up potentially for an appeal to the courts, which is a cost to the local government as well. So if you were to recommend approval, but it got to the magistrate and they said that doesn't even meet the criteria, you can't just let them have it because they were nice. You know, it's not always going to be you. You don't know who's going to be sitting on this board. And then they get to the magistrate and magistrate says, no, you can't do it. They appeal to a court and the court's got to look over. Well, now I've got two different final hearings, which are in conflict. So now the city has a legal cost of defending its final position, which would be the magistrate's position, potentially against what the plan board had put on the record. It's kind of a problem for quasi judicial proceedings.
Have we ever had an example of that happen, that once the planning board and then it went to special magistrate and then it ended up costing a lot of money?
Oh, it always costs a lot of money when you get the magistrate. It's going to cost more because I've had to adjust the fees to cover the actual cost.
Okay.
It's been very underfunded, to tell you the truth. The city's been supplementing that for quite a while because everybody who comes in with a special magistrate is probably only covering twenty percent of their cost at best. And so the taxpayers have been picking that up. Yes.
Plus, isn't there a way that we can streamline processes for our citizens? Don't we want to look as, give the appearance? And we do appreciate new things and better improvements going on in our city. And to make a homeowner go through both of those processes or a business or whatever, it's kind of tedious and cumbersome.
Now, the special magistrate is a public hearing, so people who are affected can still come in and they...
Yes, that's what I mean.
As we have one situation right now where we're going through all kinds of additional process because someone made a complaint and somebody else objected and so the hearing officer now has the two different sides submitting special order recommendations and then he's got to review through that and then we're going to have to have another hearing. So it could still end up costing us, you know, when things go that way. But that just shows that you still have, we still have to post the property, we still have to notice the hearing and so that people do come out and make comments on both sides of the issue.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any more questions? All right. Do I have a motion to approve? Aren't we going to do them separately?
You can either have them, yes, you have to, but you can either have a motion to approve or a motion to deny. Either way, it...
We have a motion with the item on the table.
We do. I move to approve. To not approve, but to...
To deny.
Deny.
To deny.
Your motion, I'm sorry?
Is to deny the staff recommendation.
To deny the staff recommendation? Oh, okay. Is there a second?
I second that.
Any more discussion? Okay. Can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Hahn?
No, or yes? Yes?
Yes, and then let us move to deny.
Yes.
Commissioner Klyat?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Beloski?
Okay. B. Okay. Would you like me to read all this for the minutes? Do you think it's necessary? Item B.
It's not an ordinance...
Amendment to the City of Madeira Beach, Beach Code. Would that, should that be read for the minutes?
Yes, the title should be read.
A city-sponsored ordinance amending the City of Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, Article eight, special magistrate to correct the grammar and provide more inclusive language throughout Section two, five oh one and two, five oh three E, to specify limits on the authority of the special magistrate as it relates to licensed and certified decisions. Section two, to expand the radius of notification. Section two, five oh three, to establish cost recovery fee for applicants failure to attend. Section two, five oh three G, transferring clerical and administrative support from the Board of Commissioners to the city manager in keeping with professional standards and practice and stating performance standards for the special magistrate. Section two, five oh six C, specifying the application of the land development code and removing the duplicative quasi judicial review of the local planning agencies. Section two, five oh seven, strengthening the standard for review of variances to ensure full compliance with local standards.
Right. And we may want to go through this, one of the, one item at a time, in case there's some portions of it that you're comfortable with and some that you're not. The duplicative portion that was just mentioned is something you've already voted to deny, so it would not, you would not want to support it showing up here. But there may be other things in here that you want to recommend approval on, so let's go over those. To begin with, as is noted, you probably see there are a lot of small changes throughout because our entire code references only men. And so I'm recommending changes to the code to make it a little more, entirely gender neutral and to be just more up-to-date language. Also, the city commission had expressed concern that our notice requirements of two hundred feet is not much notice at all, which is true, really. I've never seen one that small. Usually they're three to four hundred feet in that range. This is a small community, so you can get to a lot of people within three hundred feet. But what we're recommending is that we go ahead and amend to that three hundred because even in the last few items that have come through, people knowing that the commission was concerned about that have already been requesting a three hundred foot radius and have been doing more notice. So we're just recommending that that be codified. The public hearing process, under public hearings, you'll note that it used to state that if people didn't show up for their hearing, they'd have another chance to show up. And if they've been properly noticed, that means the city eats the cost of the second hearing. So I've added language in there that requires them to come or pay for an additional hearing. actually decisions the magistrate has the competence to hear. For instance, things over the building code. Those things have to be appealed to the building code and standards at the state. They can't be appealed here anyway. But another thing that has come up in recent years is that they have, he has at one point issued a variance on a floodplain management decision, and those are certified sealed decisions, and the magistrate doesn't have the credentials and should, in my opinion and in the staff's opinion, should not be, have the authority to force someone to sign and seal a professional recommendation. We do have one case right now that may actually cause us some significant trouble down the road. That is, they give a variance, for instance, to the Marriott to allow them to put their restroom below flood elevation, which is just not allowed. But it sounded like a good idea to the magistrate, so after that decision, they forced the floodplain manager to sign and seal the approval for that, but that doesn't mean FEMA is going to approve it, and they're taking a rather cross look at that right now. So what I've done is I've suggested language that specifies that they will not be able to require any professional to sign and seal anything. It's just not within their purview. There are other ways to appeal those decisions. Locally, others have asked to appeal decisions that I have made in regards to the floodplain, and they've gone to FEMA. FEMA's even more strict than I am, I think, so that didn't prove to their advantage, but that is one thing you can do. If you can get to FEMA and FEMA wants to sign off on it, then that's fine with me, but let them stamp it. I'm not going to be willing to do that myself, and I don't think anybody with a seal is going to willingly sign something just because a magistrate thought that it was a good idea. Then this, again, is an area that refers to the special exception section that you've just denied, and so we'll want to specify, if you approve the rest of it, that this is in keeping with your previous vote. And then finally, in the section on variances, yes, on the section on variances, we've had some issues with variances going to the magistrate where the current language states that the criteria shown below has to be substantially satisfied, which is kind of open-ended. The magistrate then is, has to determine whether they've substantially met the criteria, but not entirely met the criteria. As you, we may have talked about before, I think, somewhat in the past, we've done some training on variance process. The variance, the definition of variance and the criteria that you have to use is actually a federal standard. That's not something we determine here locally. And the courts have been pretty strict about local governments making the applicant meet all of the criteria to prove need for a variance. So what we, what we're proposing is the change from substantially to satisfies in full all of the credentials for variance. That'll make it clear that you have to meet all of the criteria in order to get a variance from the code. And then there's just other changes that sometimes look like they're adding a lot of extra language, but again, that's just to take out the reference to gender throughout. Do you have any questions? Any questions?
Are there any questions by any members? Would anyone like to make a motion regarding this new category of regulations for the special magistrate? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Can we make the motion in sections?
Yes.
Yes, or you can specify a particular section that you don't want to include it, just like you would...
Linda, I can't hear you.
Approve something with continue, you can do that. You can approve it effectively with conditions. Approve it with the condition that such and such is removed, or only approve certain sections.
Okay.
Well, I move to approve for the public hearing for someone not showing up to have to pay for the next hearing.
So Section 2503D?
I think it's, it's public hearing. Isn't it Section 250, yeah, 503?
503D.
503D?
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor. Would someone like to second?
I'll second that one.
Okay.
And I should make note of the fact that this is a public hearing, but no one is here to explain why you haven't been receiving public input during these conversations.
I can't hear you, Linda.
We should just note for the record that there's no one here in the public, which is why we aren't having public input. You can open it for public input, but there, and then close it when no one's here.
Okay. It should be noted that we have no one in the audience, no one here, while we are addressing this issue.
And I also approve the 300 feet.
Can we vote? You wanted to break these, so let's vote. We have a motion and a second for item 502503D. Okay. Can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Commissioner quiet?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Beloski?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have someone else that would like to make a motion?
I, I make the motion that the 300 feet for public notice of variance. Be approved?
Okay. Three. One minute. Three. 501, two, five, oh, three, seven, 503.
Which section is that?
Where's that?
That's Section 2503C.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay. Do all of these have to be, does, do all of these have to be announced for public hearing?
Yes, with each vote.
Okay. Since we have no one in the audience to speak to this issue, let that be noted in the record. All right. We have a motion on Section 503C. Who seconded that motion, please?
Rappa. Commissioner Rappa.
Okay. Can we have a roll call vote?
Sure. Commissioner quiet?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
And First Vice Chair Beloski?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any other items from this?
The one, the building code to state, to the state.
What number, please? You'd like to...
No, I believe that that's in reference to...
You'd like to make a motion for approval on that?
That would be 503E.
B, five, oh, she's 503. 503G transferring. I'm sorry. I don't know. Why are we doing this like this?
You could, you could do more than one at a time.
I know.
If there are specific sections that you are uncomfortable with, you could move to approve what the remainder, with exceptions.
As chairman, can I make a mo, can I ask the planning commission what section they are uncomfortable with so that we could possibly approve the rest? I, I think this is, this is very confusing, the way we are doing this. Is there anyone uncomfortable with any section in right that the staff has recommended total approval of that?
No, I think I understand it.
So is everybody in agreeance? I'm very confused why we're doing it like this.
It's important that if you're discussing things, you need to do it into the microphone. Individual conversations, no, I'm fine.
I think if we're, I think if we're agreeing on most of these things, I could be, think it should be agreed upon as an issue, rather than take, dissecting each one of these apart and us trying to look at each one of those. So I merely ask the rest of the commissioners, is there a part that you are uncomfortable with, or can we move forward and agree on the rest of the items which staff has recommended for approval?
What is the, the motion we denied? What's the number?
I think that you're referring to the section... The, that would be, the reference here is to Section 505. Oh, I'm sorry. 506, under the special exceptions, Section C. That was the one that reflects back on your previous items.
506.
C. It states that the, in order to approve the special exception, the special exception can only be granted when, if it does not adversely affect public interest, meets all the conditions set for, requested for special exceptions in the Land Development Code, and then it goes on to state that the recommendation will come from the planning official to the special magistrate instead of the city planning, instead of the planning agency. And that is, that's the part that was...
Like the first part. So I'd make a motion that we accept all the other sections except 506C.
All right. There is a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I second it.
All right. Is there any discussion? Okay. We have a roll call vote.
Sure. Commissioner Hearn?
No.
Commissioner quiet?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
And Commissioner, I'm sorry, First Vice Chair Beloski?
Yes.
Okay. Let us go to C. 21903. A city-sponsored ordinance amendment to the City of Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, subdivision three, variances to replace references to city board of adjustment with special magistrate. Okay. If you could explain that to us.
I sure can. In this particular ordinance or this section of the code, they never adopted the language and changed it from the Board of Adjustment to the special magistrate, and this is mainly a cleanup amendment. They changed the charter, and in most places in the code, went back and changed from Board of Adjustment to special magistrate, but in this particular section, they missed it. So I'm just proposing that this be brought up to current code and consistency with the charter.
Okay. So this is basically a housekeeping issue?
Yes.
Which needs to be done. All right. Would anyone else like to ask any questions of Linda? Is there any discussion?
It doesn't change anything that's out there.
No.
No.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept CH 2019-03.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. Can we have a roll call?
Just wanted to say, is it in, throughout, is it, has it been crossed out?
Yeah, it has. Yes, it has.
Okay.
Right. Now, we don't have a board adjustment, so there's actually no way to use the code the way it's written.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Commissioner quiet?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Beloski?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is old business. Do you have anything to bring up?
I only want to, and this is as good a place as any, to remind you that I know that some board members are getting some contact about old items that have already been on the agenda, especially if those are planned developments. Please remember that it's best to tell people you can't take conversation on that because those items will have to come back. If the PD has approved, they'll come back for site plan review, so they are potentially coming back in front of you as a quasi-judicial item again. So it's, it's safe for you to tell people that I really can't take your comment directly. You're welcome to send it in. It'll be distributed to all the board members or to the commission, which is really, at this point, the decision-making board. And feel free also to make sure that if somebody does contact you, that you let us know on the record who that was so that we can disclose it at the time that item may come before you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda. All right. And, okay, does any, do any members have any discussion on that item? Okay. Item six, planning commission discussion. Any items? All right. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 8th. Do we have agenda items at this time?
No, we do not. Or do we, Linda?
We, we have some text changes, additional text changes we plan to bring back to you.
Okay. All right. All right. I think we're over. Adjourned. Motion?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I second it.
Good. We're done.